Yes, mine's on. Um, it's like, I think they're starting to start getting... Okay. Be careful what you say.
The mics are hot.
Mics are hot. You should have like a little...
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order. Secretary, please call and roll.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Wynn? Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Dalton?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here. Okay, first item on business is oral communication, seeing none for the Housing Authority. Item number two, consent items, none. Public hearings, none. Item number four. Do you have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's 4A is an affordable loan agreement with Century Village Group for moderate income homebuyer assistance for the Century Village Housing Project. And Jim?
Before we get any further, I'm going to recuse myself and leave the room because I've got a business relationship with this applicant.
And Mr. Del Along is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fertal. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The item before you this evening is an affordable loan agreement with the Century Village Group to provide moderate income homebuyer assistance for the Century Village Townhome Project located at the northwest corner of Taft Street and Century Boulevard. During site assembly, a portion of the project site was purchased using housing set-aside funds, and because the project initially was intended to be a market-rate project, those funds, an amount of $905,309, would have been repaid to the housing set-aside fund upon receiving the land sale proceeds from the developer. An amendment to the DDA in September of 2010 authorized the developer to make an initial payment of $3,010,000 at closing and to carry a note in the amount of $1 million, which would be paid back as units were sold. When the redevelopment agency was dissolved in February, the Garden Grove Housing Authority adopted a resolution electing to retain the housing assets and functions of the former agency, including the affordable housing portion of the note with the developer. In an effort to make some of the units more affordable to moderate-income homebuyers, staff is proposing to make the proceeds of the loan available to fund the moderate-income homebuyer program. The program will provide down payment assistance to qualifying homebuyers in an amount not to exceed $50,000 per household. These loans have terms of 45 years, and one forty-fifth portion of the loan is forgiven for each year the owner remains in the home. Provisions do exist that provide for payback of the loan balance or the equity share should the owner choose to sell to an above-moderate buyer, or they need to release the loan before the expiration date, or if there's an uncured owner default. Staff recommends that the Housing Authority adopt the attached resolution approving the attached Affordable Housing Loan Agreement with Century Village Group LLC for the Century Village Project and authorize the Director to execute the Affordable Loan Agreement and any other pertinent documents required to effectuate the Affordable Loan Agreement and make minor modifications as appropriate on behalf of the Housing Authority. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff? Seeing none? Entertainer motion?
I'll move the issue.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Most received, five yes votes.
Let Mr. Jones come back.
You can go to matters.
Okay, any matters?
No.
None.
Any matters related to the Housing Authority, Commissioner Jones?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none? I guess we can adjourn to Tuesday, June 26, 2012. Where's your...
I'm adjuring a meeting like this.
See you next week.
Oh, we've got too much.
Oh, but Greg Blaschett's...
Susan finds my... Reach.
At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wynn? Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay, at this time, we'll have the invocation by Community Development Director, and we'll also have... Susan Emery, and we'll also have the Pledge of Allegiance done by Councilman Jones.
Gracious God, we gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag and say the pledge with me. Pledge of Allegiance?
The flag to the flag. Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Yes, we have some presentations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Ms. Emery to make the presentations this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge a longtime resident who has contributed over 10,000 hours of volunteer service to our community. Would Audrey Walker please come forward? Upon retirement from her full-time career as an office manager at Rockwell International in the early 90s, Audrey immediately sought out volunteer opportunities to serve the community that she and her husband have been part of for so long. Audrey's volunteer career with the city of Garden Grove began in 1995. Since then, she has become an enthusiastic and strong supporter of the volunteer and policing program. She also volunteers twice a week at the H. Lewis Lake Senior Center, as well as various assignments in support of City Hall and public works, and she was a constant at the Moving Wall event last year. For over 20 years, Audrey has also volunteered at Thomas House, a transitional living shelter located in Buena Clinton. Some of her VIP assignments include clerical support, police vehicle first aid kit replenishment, vacation and resort area patrol checks, the volunteer emergency response team, and event support including parking and crowd control. Additionally, she regularly acts as a community liaison at events such as National Night Out, child fingerprinting, and campaign support for Rita Cross America and drowning prevention. Usually the first to volunteer for assignments, Audrey is very capable and has a strong work ethic. She's very capable and well-respected by her volunteer peers, as well as police, city, and senior staff alike. According to Independent Sector, an organization that tracks trends in volunteerism, the national hourly rate for a volunteer equates to $21.36 per hour. That means Audrey's approximate 10,000 hours of service to date translates into over $234,000 worth of donated time, talent, and commitment to our city. Audrey and her husband Grant have been residents of Garden Grove since 1976, raising their son David here. Today, they are proud grandparents to Misty and Amber and their three great-grandchildren. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present Audrey Walker with a certificate and memento in recognition of her commitment and dedication to the community. Thank you and congratulations, Audrey.
Thank you.
Since you have all that money, can I have a loan? Congratulations.
Yeah, very high interest rate.
I'm going to give this to you, and then we'll take a picture, and then if you'd like to say a few words. Right here in the lady in the hour.
One, two, three. Take one more. One, two, and three.
I would like to say a few words. Of course, I had to write it down because when you get to be this age, you can't remember anything. Of course, I can't open the paper either. Okay. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Dalton and the council members for this recognition, and special thanks to Chief Rainey and Captain Whitman and my illustrious leader Cindy Nagamatsu for choosing me for this award. Cindy is responsible for the brilliant decision to recruit me 15 years ago. Little did she know in 95, I'd still be hanging around in 2012. And Maria Perez, our volunteer coordinator, and the rest of the community liaison division for making volunteering so much fun and feeling truly appreciated. That's important. Also, the officers and staff never fail to thank us for the job that we do. I am proud to play an active part supporting the city and its residents through the Police Department and the Senior Center. My husband Grant also appreciates you keeping me busy so he can have peace and quiet at home. I encourage everyone to consider volunteering. It is truly rewarding, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I could just share this with Audrey real quick. Audrey has set a huge benchmark, remarkable benchmark, for volunteerism, and I think it speaks so wonderfully of the kind of person that Audrey is, not only to the Police Department, but the Senior Center, and also the Thomas House. And so she truly exemplifies the spirit of volunteerism. And this is such a milestone for us at the Police Department that we also wanted to present you with a miniature badge pendant with a diamond in the center.
That's beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we also have another presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Susan Emery will make this presentation as well.
The Garden Grove City Council... The Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge Anderson Elementary School in appreciation of their fundraising efforts to support the Garden Grove Police Department Memorial. Would Principal Dr. Lori Rogers, teacher Sue Brodesson, students Angel Bowie, Katie Kamakubo, and Yazbek Murrow please come forward? On May 17, the Garden Grove Police Department held its 25th Annual Police Memorial honoring the lives of the five Garden Grove Police Officers who paid the ultimate sacrifice. This year, the focus was on youth connecting with the past. To support the efforts of the Police Department, the leadership and students at Anderson Elementary took it upon themselves to contribute in big ways. Located in Garden Grove and part of the Westminster School District, Anderson Elementary formed a new service club this year designed to provide a means for 4th, 5th, and 6th grade students to give back to the community. Enthusiasm for the service club was great, as 100 students joined the first week. Brainstorming resulted in student projects to support the Garden Grove Police Department and the H. Lewis Lake Senior Center. Their community contributions began with making small crafts to be placed on Meals on Wheels trays and Valentine's cards for seniors. Next, they decided to raise funds to purchase banners, paying tribute to the five fallen officers. Teeming with their local McDonald's, they made wonderful things happen. Two McTeacher Nights put the teachers and staff to work behind the counter while school supporters stopped by to purchase food. McDonald's then contributed 20% of all of its profits. The $1,900 raised was more than enough to purchase the five banners that were hung in the Garden Grove Civic Center for everyone to appreciate. The banners will be put up each May. The remaining money was used to host an appreciation lunch for the police officers. In keeping with the memorial theme, youth connecting with the past, an essay contest was held regarding the importance of remembering fallen officers. The essays written by the three youth with us tonight were chosen as the winners, and the students had the honor of reading their essays aloud during the memorial. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present Anderson Elementary School with a crystal piece in recognition of their commitment and dedication to the memory of our fallen officers, and for their support of the Garden Grove Police Department, the H. Lewis Lake Senior Center, and overall support of our community. Thank you.
And this is Dr. Rogers. And I'm sure you have this too, Dr.
Abby.
Okay, we'll get pictures in and after that, and we'll have to say a few words.
All right. We're going one, two, and three. And we'll take one more. One, two, and three.
Hi, my name's Katie. First of all, I want to thank the city of Garden Grove, Mayor Dalton, and his fellow council members. I would also like to thank Garden Grove Police Chief Rainey and his fellow officers. I especially want to thank the five fallen Garden Grove Police Officers who committed the ultimate sacrifice into their families. From my school, Anderson Elementary, I would like to thank Principal Dr. Rogers, Mrs. Brodesson, and my fellow classmates. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yazbek Murrow. I would like to thank all the people who work here in the community center, and I would also like to thank Chief Rainey and everybody who works at the Police Department, and thanking Anderson for letting me be here in this opportunity.
Hi, my name is Angel Bowie, and I would like to thank the community and Chief Rainey and his fellow officers for protecting us and our community, and I would especially like to thank the five fallen officers that made the ultimate sacrifice to save us.
I would like to echo those sentiments from our students, and as you can see, they did have a lovely speech. Thank you, Mayor Dalton, and thank you, council members, for this wonderful opportunity. I am truly overwhelmed because, you know, what once began as a nice hot dog luncheon has turned into an incredible relationship. And I, too, would like to thank Chief Rainey and Sergeant Reynolds for the work and the collaboration because it gives our students an opportunity to understand the history of the work of the Police Department and give us an opportunity to help students understand that work and how important it is. And I can already tell you the amount of change in our community with those resources were already there, but building and forging that relationship was powerful and critical. And I could go on and on about the many opportunities we've seen just in the past couple of years with this work. So this community opportunity was an outgrowth of that work, and I just want to thank you for this wonderful spotlight call to duty. This is beautiful. It's overwhelming, and thank you very much. It's been an honor for us to do this work with all of you and with the Garden Grove PD, and thank you for honoring our students and staff.
At this time, I'll open oral communications for the council and for the successor agency. Peter Peck.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Peter Peck. I represent Living Spring Christian Fellowship in a Christian church group named Friday Feeding. We have been called to humbly provide food, hygiene products, and clothing to the poor, homeless, and financially stressed families in Garden Grove. Statistically, none of us are ignorant of the homeless plight nationally or locally. That said, point-in-time studies give just a snapshot picture of homelessness. They only count those who are homeless at a particular time. Many people will not be counted because they are not in places researchers can easily find. This group of people, often referred to as the unsheltered or hidden homeless, frequently stay in automobiles, campgrounds, or other places that researchers cannot effectively search. For instance, a national study of formerly homeless people found that the most common places people who had been homeless stayed were vehicles, 59.2%, and makeshift housing such as tents, boxes, caves, or boxcars, 24.6%. National Coalition for the Homeless, 1995. Today, the situation is more dire. Just in the limited areas in Garden Grove, myself and Friday Feeding are able to provide some relief, we have around 50 homeless men, women, and children who are in need. God commanded us in Deuteronomy 15:11, "For the poor will never cease from the land; therefore I command you saying, 'You shall open your hand wide to your brother, to your poor, and to the needy in your land.'" We propose that through open dialogue and exchange of ideas with federal, state, city, secular, and Christian resources, along with those in need, we all can build a more secure foundation of hope. Mass homelessness is not the result of personal deficits of individuals, but rather the failure of government at all levels to ensure the social and economic conditions are in place that allow each American to secure basic human needs, including health care, a source of income, and a permanent, safe, and affordable place to live. Mass homelessness is neither inevitable nor intractable. At an individual level, homeless people themselves, supported by a vast network of governmental and non-governmental agencies, are working daily to secure jobs, health care, public benefits, and housing. At a systemic level, federal, state, and local governments are establishing strategic plans to prevent and end homelessness, developing evidence-based and promising programmatic responses, and investing in public human need programs. Yet efforts to date are insufficient, as made evident by the fact that over 3 million Americans lack a permanent home each year, and an even larger number are in imminent risk of losing their housing. Much more must be done if we are to see an end to homelessness. Excerpt from National Coalition for the Homeless Endorsement Invitation Letter to Candidates and Community. "We urge you to pledge to include the prevention and end of homelessness among your public policy priorities. The homeless are God's children like you and I. They need all of our help. It matters not whether we are speaking to those who are homeless because of economics or those who have made wrong decisions in their lives. We with you want to help all of God's children get back on their feet. I thank you for your time and consideration, and God bless."
Thank you. Marge England.
It's a delight to be here. I haven't spoken with the council for quite a while, and it's so nice to see those children doing good things for the community. It's really... This is really grassroots democracy, isn't it? Good evening. My name is Marge England. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. I'm speaking as a member of the Association of Local Missions and Ministries for Action. This is a group that used to be called Local Organizing Ministry. And the current focus of our faith-based group is to help the homeless people we see on our streets, in parks, in libraries, in Garden Grove. The members of our committee attend meetings of the Orange County Commission to End Homelessness that's chaired by County Supervisor John Morlock, and we also attend the implementation committees of that commission. We were most pleased to hear at a recent meeting that Garden Grove is considered, along with Costa Mesa, Stanton, and Laguna Beach, to be in the forefront of efforts on behalf of the homeless population. This assessment we heard was based on your promptness with which you identified a designated area suitable for a shelter and on the proposals our group asked you to consider at your February meeting. We're pleased that the city values our efforts, and we stand ready to do whatever we can to help Garden Grove do its fair share, as the county is urging all cities to do in ending homelessness. We will work with city staff to define the problems of homeless people in Garden Grove, to facilitate the exchange of information and coordination of existing services, and to extend the range of locally offered services. We are soon going to be arranging a meeting with the city manager, Mr. Fertal, to explore three things. One, ways to extend the hours public restrooms are kept open. Perhaps at selected parks, perhaps on a trial basis, we want to look into it. Secondly, how can we set up places where people in need can shower and do laundry? We've been meeting with Paul Leon of the Illumination Foundation, which is working with the city of Stanton to establish a service center, and it appears possible that a portable unit of some kind might be able to be set up within the designated area. Access to restrooms and to ways of keeping clean are basic to human dignity and could help people who are in need find jobs and become productive members of society. A third thing we want to discuss are ways we can work with the city and the county's information center to make updated, current information available to all the many groups, Lutheran Social Services, Food in the Afternoon, Thomas House, churches, and schools, which are now providing services to homeless people in our city. Ultimately, we hope a shelter can be established in the designated area. But for now, these are steps we believe are possible and should be taken to keep our community the safe and caring place we want it to be. We'll be reporting to you again as plans proceed, and we thank you for all you do for the city.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. This coming Thursday is Flag Day. I hope that people all over our city fly their flags on that day. I would like to tell you a story about a man and his flag. Van T. Barfoot wanted to fly his flag, but the homeowners' association in his Virginia town had a rule that flags could only be mounted on the house. This was not acceptable to him, so he installed his own 21-foot flagpole in his front yard. The association threatened to take legal action, but Van Barfoot told them to bring it on. He was not the type of man to back down from a fight. Let me tell you about him. He enlisted in the US Army in 1940. In 1944, he was fighting in Italy. At one point, his unit was pinned down by machine gun fire. Sergeant Barfoot advanced through a minefield and outflanked them. He took out the machine gun position single-handedly, taking 17... He took out the machine gun position single-handedly, taking 17 prisoners. When the enemy sent tanks to retake the position, he again, acting on his own, destroyed three of them. For these actions, above and beyond the call of duty, he was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor and promoted to Second Lieutenant. He continued to serve in the Army through the Korean War and the Vietnam War. He retired as what we veterans call a full-birded colonel. The story was all over the news, and the association reconsidered their position and issued a special permit. It could be a lesson to government agencies who try to push around some old codger to find out who they are dealing with. Regrettably, Van T Barfoot passed away in March at the age of 92. He, like so many of that great generation, are gone, but not forgotten. Mr. Mayor, may I ask that you close this meeting in honor of Van T Barfoot and all those who have died in defense of our freedom. In closing, let me remind everyone again that this coming Thursday is Flag Day. If you don't have one, you can, as council member Winn is fond of reminding us, to buy in Garden Grove. You can purchase a flag kit two blocks from here at the Home Depot or at the Sign and Flag Shop a block west of there on the south side of Garden Grove Boulevard. If you feel that you can't afford a standard 3x5 flag, you can get a small one at the outlet store at Brookhurst and Chapman. After all, it's not the size of your flag that matters. It's the size of the love in your heart and your pride in living in this great country. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline Lombard.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Mr. Mayor Dalton, I was disappointed to see you at the grand opening of the Scientology Church in Santa Ana two weeks ago. I'm assuming that you didn't do your research on this organization, and hence I'm here to fill you in a little bit. Scientology was involved in the largest U.S. infiltration of government in the late '70s, for which 11 of its senior executives went to jail, charged with infiltration, wiretapping, theft of documents and property of the U.S. government. There's many former members of Scientology who have left this organization due to the violent nature of the leader, Mr. David Miscavige. Many accounts of this violence are out there. Recently, actually, in beginning of this year, a former member, her name is Debbie Cook. She served this organization for 27 years, and she spoke out in a Texas courtroom after David Miscavige filed a lawsuit against her. And to her defense, she said the following about David Miscavige. It was actually something she didn't want to reveal, but as I said to her defense under oath, she said the following. "I witnessed Mr. Miscavige physically punching in the face and wrestling to the ground another very senior executive at Scientology international level. One time, Mr. Miscavige ordered his communicator to break my finger if I did not answer his question." Charged executive Mark Nelson was punished for objecting to violence he saw at the international base. Nelson was taken to another room where he was beaten by a Miscavige assistant and two other men for two hours. Nelson also was made to lick a bathroom floor for at least 30 minutes. This was the very man that you were photographed next to on June 2nd, on Saturday, David Miscavige, the current leader of Scientology, who actually holds people against their wishes in a compound in Hammett currently, as we speak. He hides behind the cloak of religion and the betterment programs that he says they set up, but there is so many human rights violations going on in Scientology that I had hoped you'd picked up on. And I believe that, you know, as a city official, you have the duty to inform yourself so that you don't misinform the citizens of Orange County. I have myself been a member of this organization. Hence, I speak out. I want to warn people for it. I was asked by Scientology to spy on people. I was asked to gather information so that Scientology could financially ruin these individuals. I was asked to harass people because they spoke out about Scientology. And I was then told by Scientology, please lie. If anybody tells you that we were involved, or asks if you were involved, tell them that we weren't. Just say that you did this on your own behalf. I truly want to warn you for this organization. I don't know what other affiliations you have with them, but there is so much violation of human rights going on. People that get involved, for the most time, end up being bankrupted or have to foreclose on their homes or give up all their pensions. Sometimes they lose their -- or in fact, quite often, they lose their family members because Scientology disconnects people from their families the minute somebody speaks out against it. And then again, the people that are right now in the compound in the desert and their terrible story, it's just beyond human imagination. It's beyond our ability to understand that this is possible in the United States currently. Scientology will tell you I'm a bigot. Scientology tells anybody who speaks out against Scientology that they are bigots. Hence, I have not said one word about their religious beliefs. I don't go there because it is not up to me, but I am against human rights violations. I believe people shouldn't be disconnected from families. People shouldn't be injured. People shouldn't be mentally abused. And that's what's going on right now. And I appreciate you listening to this. And please, research Scientology. Don't just take their word for it, because you will not get the right information. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Bergen.
We've had quite a variety of speakers tonight. Basically, I just mainly have a couple of little oddball things to talk about. I haven't been here the last meeting or two, so I just wanted to comment that, once again, I went to Strawberry Festival, the parade, saw all of you in the parade, and I think that is really a worthwhile way to start your Saturday mornings. And then I always go over and have my bowl of strawberries and walk around and buy my little tidbits. So that was a lovely morning. And then about two weeks ago, we had the Home Pride Celebration here in this building, and that is always just spectacular. So many beautiful homes, and I always don't agree with the winners, but all the pictures we see are absolutely stunning. They just show that everybody that's involved, whether it's the judges, the homeowners, or whatever, puts a lot of time and effort into doing their little bit to make Garden Grove that little bit better for people driving through and living here. And I'm not quite sure how many of you read in the paper or took any notice that, as of last Saturday, the official name, it was announced, the official name of the Crystal Cathedral that was bought about six months ago by the Catholic Church is now going to be Christ Cathedral. So I think the flow of the name stays the same. I think the intent of the building and the property stays quite the same, and I think that's very nice. I was very happy to hear that they just took such a plain kind of sounding name for the cathedral, because the cathedral is a building on its own that honors all of our religion and our feelings for Christ and God. So, and the move up date has also seemed to have been moved up about almost a year and a half, which is going to make a mad scramble for both of the organizations, because, as anyone knows, moving a house is a lot of effort, but moving schools, offices, buildings, all within about one year is going to be quite a change and quite a lot of work for everyone. But I do think the benefit for both groups will probably be, will outweigh all of the hard work that they have to put in. So that's about all I've got to say. And everybody have a happy June, and anyone that's a father out here, next weekend, have a happy Father's Day, and barbecue your hearts out, because that's your job on your day. You've got to be the father for the group. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Rubin, or Toby Rubin, I'm sorry.
Mayor Dalton, council members, staff, I am not here to make a complaint about anything. Isn't that wonderful? I'm here to invite all of you, great citizens of our great city, to the Ninth Annual Garden Grove Neighborhood Association Meeting. It will be held June 23rd at 1:00 at my home at 12361 Mead Street, which is near Lamson and Gilbert. We are serving lunch. We have wonderful speakers in line, and again, everybody is invited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rod Powell, and I am a citizen of Garden Grove. And I will probably be at that get-together, and it's good every year, as you recall, Bruce, from last year. And the food is always good, and it's just a real nice way to spend a morning and afternoon. Unlike our previous speaker, have some, I don't know if they're complaints, I would prefer to say that they're observations. The week after, a lot of us spoke about dispensaries, medical marijuana. We apparently riled up some people that are in favor, not of medical marijuana, they're in favor of these dispensaries. And that's the part that I think is, like, a few weeks ago, Mayor Dalton, you'll recall that when you had a chance to speak, you felt that the simple answer is to distribute them just like other prescription medication at a pharmacy, something to that general effect. And why not? You know, why do we need a separate dispensary? Is it because it's marijuana? Why can't, if this is medication, why can't it not simply be distributed like other prescription medication at a pharmacy? You know, what's the difference? Why do they need to go to some faraway, hidden-away little corner? And not all of them are so hidden away as in Anaheim. So I don't understand. I also don't understand why we need to be the capital of medical marijuana dispensaries for Orange County. You know, why do we have to have that reputation? Why do we have to have 90 of them? So, you know, you say, if we have to have 90, why can't we have 900? Why can't we have 10,000, you know? Why are we limited to 90? Where does this come from? You know, leadership. You guys are here to be leaders, and you have some decisions to make. You keep conveniently passing the buck on this one, saying that you're stymied, you're in a catch-22. And I don't get that. I don't buy that. I believe that there is something you can do. You could, I just, I don't know what it is. I haven't studied the matter that closely. I have a simple answer, and they shouldn't be there. There's other answers. If you have to have, if you, I mean, who says you have to have them? That's what I keep getting from the council here, that your answer is, we have no choice. We're in a catch-22. So I don't understand that. I don't understand why we have to have so many and why we have to have this reputation. I wanted to speak, I don't want to take up all my time on that issue, because I didn't have a lot to say. I made my point, I think. Fireworks, last night, was it the Kings that won? They won the hockey? My neighbors celebrated that, you know, by, you know, setting off what sounded like a bomb. You know, it sounded like an M80. That was real class. You know, they're running fireworks all year long over on, what is that street? Edith? I could almost tell you who's doing it, but I don't want to, until I would know actually for a fact. I'm pretty sure I know where it's coming from. And this is what we get, because we're also known as the fireworks capital of Orange County. You know, I mean, sure you have them in Santa Ana, you have them in Stanton, you have them in Buena Park, Westminster now. All the poorer cities, you know, when you get down to it. Costa Mesa, the only poor city by the beach. The cities that, I mean, why do we have? I read for this council, literally, the entire grand jury report a little while ago, cover to cover, and it's like I got no reaction to blatant facts by an unbiased grand jury that was only concerned in, they're volunteers that do this for the welfare of their fellow citizens. And, I mean, I wish you guys would actually have taken that seriously. I hope, I really hope, it doesn't have to end up one day where something horrible happens, you know, another house burning with more consequence. I certainly hope that it doesn't have to be that way, just, and I hope that your decisions are not made on the fact that the fireworks companies put money in you guys as campaign contributions. I hope that's not a factor. I would hate to think that's the factor in why you make the decisions on fireworks and disregard a grand jury report. Thank you for allowing me to --
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'll close oral communications, and I'll recess the council, and we'll go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll now convene the June 12th meeting of the Garden Grove Successor Agency. Madam Chair, would you like to call roll? Or Madam Clerk?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Winn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. Okay, we already did oral, so consent items.
Move the items.
So I can call the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
What's that?
Didn't he vote on one of them as a final commission?
The consent items are just the minutes from the last meeting and then the warrants, 2A and 2B. Okay, items for consideration, 3A.
Mr. Chairman, your items for consideration, there's four of them, and they all are in response to requests and/or in preparation of responses to the Department of Finance regarding various projects. And so we'll go through these, but they're essentially in preparation for responding to the Department of Finance in their disapproval of various projects. The first one has to do with the Water Park Hotel, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Chairman, members of the successor agency, purposes of report is for the successor agency to reconsider the appropriateness, the inclusion of the Garden Grove MXD DDA on the recognized obligation payment schedule. The ROPS was approved by the Oversight Board April 9th, 2012. The DOF sought to review the ROPS by a letter dated April 25th, 2012. Subsequently, the DOF sent a letter May 10th, 2012, with exception to certain projects, also including the Garden Grove MXD LLC or Inc. project, and has directed the successor agency and Oversight Board to reconsider their prior decisions. The DOF maintains the DDA is not an enforceable obligation. We feel the DDA is an enforceable obligation under settled contract, California contract law, under the Dissolution Act AB 126. The project's developer attorneys have summarized why the agreement is an enforceable obligation, and that is also attached to the staff report. So at this time, staff recommends that the city council, in the capacity of governing body of the successor agency, approve the attached resolution and to reconsider, reapprove, reaffirm the DDA with Garden Grove MXD as enforceable obligation as defined by Health and Safety Code 34167D5 and 34171D1E as an appropriate expenditure item under the ROPS. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Greg. Members, any questions of staff or any comments?
Have we heard about any lawsuits yet against them?
Have we heard about any lawsuits yet against them?
We're aware of a couple of lawsuits. One by the City of Hercules, the developer.
Who's the City of Hercules?
Far away.
It's in Northern California. Yeah, I think East Bay.
Without getting into a lot of particulars, our understanding is that upon the filing of the lawsuit, there were some correspondence with the Attorney General's office, and that resulted in the Department of Finance rescinding their action to not approve the enforceable obligation. So they reversed it. There was a --
Why are we writing letters then? Why don't we do a lawsuit?
Well, one of the, under recommendation of the council retained by McQuinney, is to exhaust some of the administrative actions that may be deemed still necessary prior to filing a suit. So the item that's before you tonight, or the items, is the first attempt to go back and exhaust all administrative remedies. And the letter that is attached to this item will be forwarded to Department of Finance, essentially putting them on notice that failure to resolve this dispute certainly sets in motion then the next step to be a legal action. So that's exactly what this does. It's laying the groundwork for a legal remedy on behalf of the developer.
Sounds good. I'll move the issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Item 3B.
Item 3B is a similar action, and I'll let Mr. Dalton along and give the staff report. But essentially, there's four or five other projects that the Department of Finance did not approve. And we will be having a separate correspondence, putting them on notice that we've taken action tonight to reconsider and have those projects resubmitted to the Department of Finance. And if that didn't cover Mr. Delalonga's staff report, he can follow up with any more details.
Well, I'll go, I'll just let you know what projects they are. Between Greg's staff report and Mr. Fratell's explanation, it's pretty much the same thing as the McQuinney item. And we're just doing this separately in order to keep the two projects separate because the McQuinney project is on a much quicker track than these other projects are, and they're kind of on their own little track. The items for this report are the Site C Disposition and Development Agreement with Land and Design, the Site B2 Disposition and Development Agreement with New Age Garden Grove LLC, the Brookhurst Triangle Disposition and Development Agreement with New Age Brookhurst LLC. And the last item is the Richard and Jan Kill Purchase and Sale Agreement Promissory Note, which is a land purchase agreement for the Site C project. So with that, we would like, our recommendation, staff's recommendation, is to reconsider, reapprove, and reaffirm the disposition and development agreements with those entities and the purchase and sale agreement and promissory note with Richard and Jan Kill. And we also have a reconsider, reapprove, reaffirm the recognized obligation payment schedule, the successor agency admin budget. And we want to make certain recommendations and directions regarding the separate assets and liabilities of the successor agency. Finally, authorize the director to take such actions and execute such other documents as are appropriate to effectuate the associated requirements of the Dissolution Act. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Move the issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Item 3C, Certificates of Participation.
Again, this item is in preparation of following up with our formal response to the Department of Finance. And I'm not going to steal Mr. Delalonga's thunder, and I'm going to allow him to explain this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell.
Mr. Chair and members of the successor agency, that in before you for your consideration is the authorization to transfer the former redevelopment agency's properties to the city. This request is being made as a result of the California Department of Finance determination that the certificates of participation item on the ROPS, which are bonds that were used to purchase various properties for redevelopment purposes, does not qualify as an enforceable obligation under the Dissolution Act. In two litters from the Department of Finance received on May 10 and May 26, 2012, they have indicated that the payment of certificates of participation is not an enforceable obligation. At this time, we have not conceded that these bonds are not enforceable obligations, and we are still in discussions with the Department of Finance. If we are not successful in our discussions with the Department of Finance, and since the city is now incurring the obligation to pay this debt, staff is recommending that the successor agency authorize the transfer to the city the former redevelopment agency properties which were purchased with the bond proceeds. These properties include parts of Site B2 adjacent to the Sheraton Hotel, the Water Park Hotel project site, and the Brookhurst Triangle project site, and are shown on the attached list of the staff report. Staff recommends that the successor agency authorize the transfer of those properties purchased with the proceeds of the 2002 Certificates of Participation to the city. And that concludes my report on this one. If there are any questions.
Any questions?
Move the, second.
Call the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Lastly, item 3D.
3D, again, is sort of a covering our bases type of an action relative to Department of Finance, and Mr. Delalonga will explain this action as well.
Thank you again, and good evening once again. In our ongoing claims and negotiations regarding the dissolution process and the successor agency's recognized obligation payment schedules, or ROPS, only the former agency approved the enforceable obligation payment schedule, the EOPS. The successor agency and the Oversight Board never did approve the EOPS. Although this may not be required, legal counsel is recommending the successor agency consider and approve the EOPS as a precautionary measure to cover all of our bases. Staff recommends the successor agency adopt the attached resolution approving the amended enforceable obligation payment schedule. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions, we're here to answer them.
Move the issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? See none, we'll adjourn. Back to council.
Okay, at this time, we'll reconvene the council. Let the record show the same members are present. And we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended items 4A through 4G be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Move the consent items.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, your first item is an agreement with GIE Technologies for managing road condition data. And A.J. Holman is here to give a staff report for this item.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, good evening. Before I present our staff report, please note that the staff drafted the agreement as a one-year agreement with five additional one-year extensions for a total of six terms. However, the agreement is intended to be for a total of five terms, as reflected in your memorandum. Because of this situation, we are asking the city council to approve the agreement for a total term of five years. Upon approval, the term of agreement language shall be corrected with appropriate signatures prior to executing the agreement. Tonight's objective is to receive city council approval to enter into professional service agreement with GIE Technologies Incorporated to collect, update, and manage road condition data for the city's pavement management system. The Streets Division uses the pavement management system to determine maintenance needs for the city's network of roads, streets, and alleys. In order to continue receiving measure M2 funding, every two years, pavement inventory assessment and projected rehabilitation or replacement data must be collected and submitted to OCTA. Collection of our street condition data is a critical step in applying for grant funds and is necessary in the setting of projected maintenance priorities and strategies. A complete review of our existing roadway segmentation has been completed, and our consultant, GIE, has entered the data collected into the micropaver segmentation database. It is recommended that Garden Grove City Council approve the attached service agreement with GIE Technologies for a total service term of five years at a total cost of $306,049.33. Approve allocation of available funds for the agreement with GIE Technologies Incorporated, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and make minor modifications inappropriate. This concludes staff report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Move the item.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
7B.
Mr. Mayor, 7B is a resolution regarding the proposed early retirement option for the general employees, and Mr. Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. This is a follow-up to the action at the last council meeting, which was a financial disclosure related to offering the early retirement incentive. This is now the follow-up step, which is to actually enact the resolution and open the window period. And this is specific for our non-safety, non-management employees. So this would be city hall employees, the civilian police employees, and the public works employees. And it's consistent with the same that we've done in the past. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for staff? Here we go, another one, a ten, a motion.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
7C.
Mr. Mayor, 7C is a resolution approving the annual report from the Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the purpose of this report is to adopt a resolution confirming the annual report of the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District and levying assessments for 2012, 2013. On October 26, 2010, the city council adopted the GGTID. The purpose of the GGTID is to fund, to provide revenue for advertising, marketing, and also increase, designed to increase overnight stays within the resort district, also for new construction and maintenance of improvements within the Garden Grove Tourist Improvement District and activities which promote tourism. The GGTID includes hotels along Harbor Boulevard from the north city boundary to Garden Grove Boulevard, and has two tiers. One is 2.5% assessment, and also the second part is south of Lamson Avenue is 0.5%, tier two. It is recommended at this time that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution of the city council confirming the annual report of the Garden Grove TID for fiscal year 2011, 2012, and levying assessment for fiscal year 2011, 2012 for the Garden Grove TID. That concludes my report.
Any questions for staff?
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received for yes votes.
Okay, we'll go to matters. Mr. Broadwater.
I thought the Strawberry Festival was pretty good this year. I understand they did very well. And it was really good. I think there was a problem with the parade, and that upset them a little bit, which I guess eight or nine, 10, and then it elapsed. So they said that won't happen again, that band will not be asked to be in the parade again. So, but I thought it was good.
Mr. Jones.
Just want to announce that Saturday, June 23, we will be celebrating the grand opening of a new splash pad amenity at Atlantis Play Center, which is over at Atlantis Park by Bolso Grande High School. Entry to the park is free that day, so bring the kids and bring their bathing suits and come enjoy our new splash pad. That's been in the works for the last couple of years, and Kim Hoy and her group have done a wonderful job of making it a reality, so I can't wait to see what it looks like. And I can't wait to get my own kids out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say how much I enjoyed the Strawberry Festival this year. It was a great, another great event. I want to congratulate the Los Angeles Kings. I'm a big Kings fan. It's been the last 40, 45 years.
You led off the firework.
No comment. And I want to mention something that happened just recently in our end of town, West Garden Grove. Valley View opened up. It's all coming together. It was closed for 55 hours, and we all felt it going down Valley View, and it was really a pleasure to see it open. And I think the southbound side is going to be finished pretty soon. It's all coming together, and I'm really looking forward. I think all my neighbors in that area of town is really looking forward to that. And so it's all been worth it, but it has been quite a while getting there. So that's happy days ahead of Valley View.
Okay, as requested, we'll adjourn the meeting in memory of Auntie Barfoot. And it will be until the next regular meeting of the Garden Grove City Council, Tuesday, June 26, 2012, here in this building. Thank you.